At a signal from the principal, the pupils in ordered ranks, hands to their sides, face the flag. Another signal is given. Every pupil gives the flag the military salute. Right hand lifted, palm downward to align with the forehead and close to it. To be fair, Bellamy was first, and one has to wonder if the salute, like certain other symbols that are forbidden by YouTube, was appropriated by a certain later political movement. And that, in fact, leads us to that other famed element of the Pledge of Allegiance, the right hand over the heart. This was actually introduced into law by Congress in December 1942, basically because of, you know, that other guy. Naturally, some people weren't happy about this, Johnny Foreigner stealing our salute, that kind of thing. But it became the accepted and correct form. As an aside, the fact that the Bellamy salute, as it was called, was used right up until late 1942 explains why a number of Americans from the time have since been accused of having fascist sympathies. I mean, they might have had fascist sympathies, but throwing this salute was literally as American as apple pie. And so does not constitute proof. And there you have it, some interesting details about the American Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
We don't have a lot of business going on tonight. There are no current appeals in front of the board, but I did want to get the group together. This is actually our first full meeting of this particular year. But we have two new members for the ZBA that were just recently appointed. Vern, your last name is?
Barrick.
Vern Barrick and Ryan Tivo. They're new on it. I don't know, I don't remember which one of you guys got the short term or the long term, because there were differences in the...
Mine's one year, so...
There's just one year, okay. That's all we have to put up with here then?
Welcome. Well, welcome. It says on the website that he's till 27.
Okay.
And you're till 30.
Okay. Well, I don't know. That's not what he told me. But, okay.
Well, that's whatever.
He just had a birthday.
Whatever. That was a little tease.
Yeah, I think you got the new one and you got whatever was left on Phil's term. I think it was like another couple of years anyway.
So you got the short stick or the long stick, whatever you're...
Yeah.
I'll have something to live for.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, most of the heavy duty work we were doing, which was the planning board putting this thing all together, is pretty much over. For the last week's meeting, which the town board took over the planning board's time, I think they've pretty much done reviewing the thing. They said they had a few more things they already wanted to read through, but they would be finished with it. So, all I really wanted to do tonight was just introduce the two new members. We do meet on the fourth Monday of every month. If we aren't going to meet, I will post that on the website, so you'll see it there. Would you also make sure April has your email address?
I can send you that around.
So that anything that needs to go out, she'll have everybody's, and I'll take the same thing if I have to announce. I just put a little mailing list together and go make sure it goes out to everybody.
And I'm also...
You'll put it on the website, which I never ever go through. So, I will...
April, will you? But I will also, if I cancel the meeting, I will email everybody and let them know as far as possible. Okay. The only other item that I wanted to address tonight, for all of us, we are required, I'll put that in quotes, to have four hours of training each year. It's pretty nonspecific what the training is. For those of you who can attend, the Tuck Hill Commission has an annual training day every year. This year is going to be over at the Turning Stone. It's on the, the actual training day is May 2nd. There are four different sessions there. You go to, you pick ones that you like. By the time you're done, you've got all your four hours, and you never have to worry about it. The alternative is that the Department of State has some courses on their website, and each one of them takes about an hour to get through. I'll put on your honor that if you want to go there and look them up, they have several on zoning, on the responsibilities of zoning board, on appeals, and how to handle them. And that's the main thing I'm interested in. What I will try to do, if we don't have a lot of business coming up, and last I talked to Scott, he had people inquiring about things, but there was nothing specific, no submissions or anything that we're going to have to act on. Our job, as the lawyers explain it, we are a quasi judicial board, which means we actually have legal authority to make the decisions. Okay? And our decisions will stand. They can be reviewed in a court like anybody else's. But when we make the decisions, we will do it in a public hearing. So anytime we have an appeal, that meeting will officially become a public hearing. We'll hear whatever the, you know, the appellant has to say. If the codes officer has something to add, we'll put that in there. If the public has something to add, they're entitled to comment on it as well. Although my, my general feeling is, is when we invite the public comments, I do try to limit the comments to the matter at hand, so that it doesn't open up to a wide ranging discussion of things that the town here is, is or isn't, isn't doing or whatever. So, we'll go on that particular thing. I will try, at each one of the meetings, at least for the next couple, three months, especially for the newer people, I will try to bring in some of the training materials that I've downloaded. And if we have to, we'll just scan, you know, 30 minutes going through the thing, so you get a feel for what things are. The general protocol for the zoning board, we are, we are an appeals board, except that in the zoning law and in the new zoning law, we have been given responsibility for what's currently called a conditional use permit and what would be called a special use permit. So we are the first ones that that comes to. And somebody who's going to apply for a building permit, at least in theory, can come directly to us. They don't have to go to the zoning officer. My preference is that they do, so the zoning officer can look at it, give advice on it, but that's our... Other than that, we don't do anything unless there is an appeal from a decision by the codes officer. So he is kind of the first, he's kind of the first line. Somebody wants to do something on a piece of land, a piece of property, whatever, they go to him first. He will say, "Okay, you conform to zoning," or "You don't conform to zoning." If he says, "You don't," I won't give you a permit. They can appeal to us. And they just come in, present their evidence, whatever. We look at it. There are two different sets of standards, two different types of appeals. There is an area variance, which is, I would call, of the two, two types, it's more liberal. There are a number of standards that the state describes, but they don't all have to be met, and they give the board a little bit of leeway as to the jurisdiction, as to what they can and can't do. The second one is a use variance. There are four criteria defined in state law, not just in our zoning ordinance, that a request for a use variance must meet. And they have, and it's up to the appellant to bring in sufficient proof to convince the board that they have met all four tests. And we don't have any leeway on that. If you talk to the lawyers, when they have the questions and answer sessions and stuff, they'll tell you, "If you don't do it right, if you don't have the notes right, if you don't have everything down, somebody takes it to court, you'll get tossed if you don't do it right." The other thing we do is we can render an interpretation of the zoning ordinance or the zoning law. So if there is a question and somebody thinks the zoning officer did not apply the law properly, they can ask us for an interpretation. We can look at the facts, we can render an interpretation, say, "Yeah, he did it right, no, he didn't, and here's, here's, the board's holding on that." Once we do that, that forms what I call a mild precedent. It doesn't bind us, but unless there's a reason to vary from that, we don't change it. And from then on, that's what the law means. Codes officer no longer has the discretion to say, "Well, I don't agree with you, I want this or that." So that's, that's the way that, that particular law works. So, from the standpoint of how the board operates, we're fairly constrained by what the state law says we can do and what and how we're supposed to operate. So, that's the basic, the basic premise we have to start with, is that we have cert authority, there are limitations on how we can exercise it, and there's things that we have to see or hear or have evidence of before we can grant or disagree with the codes officer, whatever. Most of the training sessions will cover stuff like that. And some of them will even have references to court cases where, you know, a ZBA decided this, and the court said, "No, you did it wrong." Or the ZBA didn't do something, and somebody went to court and said, "Well, you should have done this." And most of those become precedent if somebody takes it into court outside of the ZBA. But for the most part, we have the legal authority to make a decision. And once that decision is made, there are, you are allowed 30 days for somebody to file an appeal against it. If they don't make it within the 30 days, whatever we rule stays. Even if we did it wrong, it stays.
So, it's always brought up that zoning laws have no memory, but in that case, where you said it would set a precedence and that would become law, then it would have memory?
It does have a cer...
In that case?
It does have a certain amount. Yeah, they tell you they don't have memory, and each case is supposed to be decided on itself. But if we set up a pattern for making the decisions and you don't follow it, you're much more open to questions of why you did or didn't.
Carl, I think that, I think that if we don't apply it fair across the board, then it's likely that, that we could be viewed as though we're making decisions based on an arbitrary discriminatory...
Arbitrary and capricious is the famous phrase, yeah.
Yeah. And I have a second question. Can a potential appellant come in and present a hypothetical case and request a interpretation? Or does it have to be real life case specific?
No, it has to be case specific. They can come in and ask a question that said, you know, "How would this be considered if I were to do this?" Or, or, you know, "What would you think of..." And, and we can, we can tell them, say, "Well, you know..."
This is what we think.
This is what we, this is what we think, but until you bring the ca... Until the case is brought in front of us, we can't tell you yes or no.
Okay.
So you have to be asked, ask something specific before we can actually make that decision.
Right.
So, we can't sit here and somebody says, "You know, that zoning law is really stupid." And we say, "Yeah, you're right, let's make it..." Unless you're, unless somebody has brought an appeal in front of you, we can't rule on it. That's, you know, we have a, we're kind of like the Supreme Court, we have appellate jurisdiction, nothing gets there until somebody else has made a decision.
Right.
And in our case, it's the zoning officer.
Okay.
So in Bill's case, you're better off going to the zoning officer and saying, "This is kind of what I'm thinking of doing, what's your suggestion?"
That would be, that would be the first place to go, is ask the zoning officer. In our case, he's also the codes officer. And you'd be able to say, "Well, yeah, you meet zoning, but what you're showing me is never going to meet the uniform building code or the energy code or whatever." We do not real, we do not act on anything except the zoning law. We have absolutely no authority to make exceptions to any of the building codes. That's not part of our bailiwick at all. In fact, in order to, in order to get exceptions to it, I was reading up on this from an engineering standpoint, you got to go to the Department of State, there's a particular division in there, and you ask them, you know, "Could we, could we vary from the codes for the following reason?" And give them the reason why and the rationale. They're the only ones in the state that can grant that exception. So if somebody comes in and Scott's told them, "Yeah, that, that structure won't do," or "You can't meet the sanitary code requirements," that's not up to us to judge. And with the, with the new law, once that goes into place, and it looks, it looks like it might actually happen in my lifetime.
Are we going to get brand new books and copies and put the maps and...
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to, they're going to have all, they were talking about having all that stuff printed up eventually.
Good.
Where was I?
My other one's long apart. In your lifetime, you might have...
In my lifetime, I understand. That new law, under current law, the building permit says, "Yeah, you meet zoning, yeah, you meet code." In the new law, there will be a zoning permit, in which the codes officer says, "Yes, you comply with the zoning law," or "No, you don't." So the, the idea of all the other code compliance won't even enter into that. So his first decision is to say, "Yep, according to the map, according to what's in the law, you know, you are compliant with the zone, you know, with the, with the current zoning law in that district." He gives them a zoning permit, then they have to come back and get a building permit. Makes it much easier for us not to have to worry about both of those at once. So that's really all I, I was going to talk about tonight. I mean, if anybody's got any questions about the zoning board or zoning, whatever, you know, we're here, we, you know.
So, I'm sorry.
One, there was one now that's the existing zoning law. I kind of scanned that one in. There is a new one on there. I don't remember. I think if you look at it, there's, there's another one that shows you what the new zoning law is. And there's almost, there's, I think there's only a couple minor changes the board wanted to that. And one was a, one was a dimension, and the other one was putting a signature page on it, so that they would have a record of changes. But yeah, that will be on there, along with the map. That map is on there now. And all of that will be available for the public to read. And I wanted to make sure that, that the, you know, our final version is up there, so that when they, if, if they move to accept it, there'll be a public hearing for the zoning law. And it'll be out there, so everybody will have a chance to pull it up and read it and see what it says.
And then the planning board starts all over.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I talked to Pete, and this is not related to the, to the ZBA activities, but this will be the fifth year since the comprehensive plan was changed, or updated. And so the planning board will probably start a review of that comprehensive plan as well. If they decide maybe some changes are going to be required to zoning because of that, they will probably do like we did the last time, is ask the town board to have us help them out with it, since, you know, we're going to be, you know, familiar with the zoning and the activities and stuff. Yeah, if, if you're not familiar with how that works, the town, almost every town has a comprehensive plan. It's a relatively long-term vision of where they see the town going, of some of the strategies to achieve the, the goals that they've set within the plan. It's almost always based on a survey of the town. Ours is a little old, so that we may even do another one. The zoning law is what enables that comprehensive plan to be. So the plan is kind of, here's the vision for what we think is, is going to be, here's how we see the different zones and how we want to have the activities. Then the zoning law says, "Okay, within this district, this is what you can do. These are all the rules, these are the standards we set, the dimensions of things." And that basically codifies the direction that the comprehensive plan is going to go. That's the way it's supposed to work.
Actually, if they pass the zoning, it should help the planning, because we did the two townships, we did the...
Yeah, the new law, the new law, as you read through it, you find it's, it's much less restrictive than the existing one. There, there's one zone, I happen to sit on it right now, that's extremely restrictive. Basically, you can live there, and that's about it. And it got to be silly, you know, after, you know, forty some odd years of, of having a zone that was supposed to be the north shore of Lake Delta, that goes all the way up the way we rode. So that's gone. We have kept, so we've combined the residential rural and the residential agricultural zones into one. There's still a residential community zone, which is the small areas that have concentrated housing. That's over on the corner of Elmer Hill Road. Our little piece of, to you, you could point, and that's small gathering up on Standish Road. We have two hamlets, which are the larger populated areas, that's Westernville and Northwestern. There are a couple of small commercial industrial areas. And then what you see in red on the map there is an overlay that in those particular zones, you can apply for a commercial use. Now, that has to be approved by the zoning board, probably reviewed by the planning board for recommendations. But it's far less restrictive than somebody having to come in and get a use variance to, to put in, you know, a small commercial store that, you know, conforms with the neighborhood, that's extremely hard to do. Fairly in the state and county forest areas. And they're, they're actually fairly restrictive, but there's a reason for that, is because of their, the particular environment that they're in. Anything else? Anybody have any questions, sir?
Is there, just, is there restrictions on the canal? You always talk about people trying to put a driveway in.
Well, Canal Corporation has, has an easement there that is still acting.
Yeah, they, they have...
They're in their own entities, they're not...
They're nothing to do with us.
Nothing to do with us.
Right, but there is, you have, like, if you were going to do something...
If you were going to do something there, and you're going to go on that particular land, they still, I guess, I don't know if they hold an easement or a right of way, well, it's one of the two. But either way, you would have to get permission from them to do it.
But it follows the old canal.
Yes, the old Black River canal, yes.
And a certain distance either side.
Yeah, I think it's like, it's like a 50-foot wide right of way or something like that.
It's bigger than meets the eye.
Yeah.
So who, did we figure out who's, like, I mean, it used to be the canal, it used to be the canal authority, and then it went to Parks, and then it went to whoever...
Goes to whatever department has money. Yeah.
But who's running it now?
Which I mean, I think...
Basically, that goes...
I think the Parks and Historic, Historic Restoration actually runs most of that now. They're the ones that, that have the money to extend the, the canal trail that's supposed to go eventually all the way up the road.
That was strictly for funding purposes, but it was at one point in time, it was part of the thruway.
Yeah, thruway authority held it, and then the Canal Corporation had it, and I think Parks and Historic had it.
Because it includes all tributaries all the way to the end. So you go way past West Lydon to get to the Mohawk, to the beginning of the Mohawk River, so...
Well, that's, 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 that's the DEC's area of stuff, but the canal itself, the, the land of the old canal, has, has a, has a right of way or easement on it.
But I thought, because Lake Delta is part of the canal system.
Yep.
So, any tributaries, the Mohawk River, Lansing Kill, all of them, you got, you can go way up, out between West Lydon and Sebo almost.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't, they don't own a right of way on it. They, the, the control is over any navigable river. Once you get past the point where you can't take a boat over there, it, it kind of reverts back. It's still under DEC control, because it is a feeder as part of the water jet. But as far as the Canal Corporation or whoever owns it, that would be as far as it would go.
And that all varies too, so...
Yeah.
Like where I'm at, I don't have to allow people to fish, and then they got designated fishing areas on the river.
Why? Because it wears along the...
It's private property. No, private property.
I thought you, as long as you stay in, like, yes.
No.
If you stay in the river.
If it is a navigable, if it's a navigable water...
You could be in the river.
If it's a navigable waterway...
You're touching property.
Yeah. If it's a navigable waterway, you can be on the river, and I think maybe five feet of shoreline or something like that, is the general guide, but that's it.
So where's the rest of it?
The rest of it's private property.
All it's...
We took a canoe from us ranch all the way down, and we dumped it fifty times.
Yeah. As long as you stay in the river, you're probably all right. And same thing with the Lansing Kill going up there too. Whoever owns that property there, it's, it's, they're... But my, my understanding, I remember who was telling me about it. Apparently, the state now has plans. They've improved up to...
My attorney was talking about it.
Yeah.
Buck Hill, and they've come down into...
Well, they've, they've actually paved the trail right up to Olney's. The next section is going to be from there up to the fish hatchery. Then I think they cross over and actually go up the west side of the river. I'm not sure how they're going to cross over there. But their, their plan is to have the trail go all the way up, the old Black River path, all the way up to Boonville.
Yeah. Because right now, on Buck Hill, they, they tearish that up, and you can, it's down into Pixie Falls.
Yeah.
It's already done.
Well, that, you know, that trail, they, you know, they maintain that during the wintertime with the cross-country skin and everything anyhow, on the old canal path.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about coming from Buck Hill and down into Pixie Falls.
Oh, yeah, I understand that they've done that too, yeah.
That's going all the way to Dakotas.
Yeah, that's part of the, what's it, they call it, the North Country Trail?
Who's the first person to watch that, that distance?
That would be me.
Not me either.
So they went through the old Boy Scout camp up there and everything?
I don't know where they're coming from, North Dakota or South Dakota.
Well, I think up here on Buck Hill. In order to get to Pixie Falls, you get those real scout camps and that old...
Anybody have anything else? Don?
Yes. So, I had a question on how the zoning board manages changes in properties.
I'm just...
Like, I know that the EMS helicopter pad was a concern for a lot of the public because of the closeness to the ballpark and what we considered the town parking at the time. So, that was changed, it seems, in our opinion, to suit that purpose of that EMS. So now we're looking at maybe this town hall changes here, and the same kind of thing looks like it's occurring, where we're going to take an existing zone area, like every house is, April, April's house is here, April Estevard. And so it's Lanzarney's house, is right down this street. And, and so the towns grabbed this large section of property here, and I don't know, if I lived here, I'd be kind of concerned about what was going to happen to my backyard. Are there going to be cars and parking lots and buildings going up? How is that going to impact the, the existing use of someone's property in that area? How, how do you guys manage that kind of an issue?
That's actually, well, in managing that, that's a planning board issue. Unless codes officer, or I guess the town board, were to make a decision as to do something with it, and somebody thought it didn't conform to zoning, they can come and ask the zoning board to interpret whether or not that is a proper use under the zoning. But we, again, we're an appeals board, we don't take any action on stuff that's happening. If somebody, if, if somebody buys a piece of property and combines the two, or takes a piece of property and splits it, we don't ever know about that. We don't ever know about that, because it's none of our business.
Can you follow up?
Mm-hmm.
So, so if this section here is zoned residential, if the town buys the land and then puts a parking lot in there, is that residential? Or if they build a building in that area?
It's a, it's a hamlet zone.
Oh, I understand.
It's what they call a residential hamlet zone. We would look in, you know, the, the codes officer would look in the book and said, "What's allowed in that zone? What things are permitted? What things require a special use permit?" And he would make that decision.
The codes officer.
The codes officer would make that decision, not us.
Okay.
If somebody disagreed with it, then they can come to the ZBA and say, "We want your interpretation as to whether he properly evaluated that use."
So if April had a concern with something that happened in her, you know, next to her property, and they're going to put a parking lot in, and she could say, "Hey, you know, I, I am uncomfortable with this, it's going to change the value of my property, let's take that before the zoning board," and you folks would look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, but we would, we would look at it as to whether or not a proper zoning decision was made.
By the codes.
By, by the codes officer. I mean, that, that's our job. If the codes officer says something and somebody disagrees, we're the ones they come to.
So how does that work then, if it is residential?
Well, again, remember, it's called a residential hamlet zone. Residential is not the only allowed use.
Right.
Okay, so there are other uses that are, that are permitted or having, you know, getting a special use permit that could be done within there.
Right.
They still go to the codes officer for that.
But if I drill down and I say, you know, let's drill in for a second and say, "Right now, it's, you know, it was vacant land, and it backed up to residential properties." And if it's a town property, then is it still considered residential?
If it lies within that particular zoning district, it is governed by that zoning district.
And then...
Even if the town board is, is trying to do something, they're still, they're still held... held by the same zoning law that everybody else is.
I see. So when you make a determination, you don't take into consideration whether it's the town that's coming before you or... And then there's the question, eminent domain, and how does that reflect with respect to zoning, or is there any connection?
That is, that is totally outside our purview. If somebody came in and said, you know, "What do you think about the eminent domain?" I said, "I don't know enough about eminent domain law." And, you know, if a court or whatever authority makes a decision that they're going to seize a property for a particular use, the only say we would have in it is that, according to zoning, the use you propose is not permitted.
I see. Okay.
And we, and we would, we would interpret that the use you want to make of this, and we don't care whether you've taken it by eminent domain or you bought it or whatever, that's not a permitted or conditionally permitted use. You need a use variance.
Interesting.
And they would have to come in and come up with the same standards. It doesn't matter whether it's the town or not. Now, I, from my standpoint, there may be something else in state law or executive law someplace that says they come in and exercise eminent domain, and they want to override everything they want to do. They may have some authority somewhere to do that, but I've never heard of it.
Would the town have the authority to ask the zoning board to change the zoning to...
We don't change the zoning. They would go to the planning board and say, "We're looking at possibly changing the zoning ordinance. What do you think of that? Make a recommendation." The planning board would go back to the town board and say, "Okay, you know, if you want to make the change, here's what it should look like." It's the town board's responsibility to change the law, not us.
So it is the planning board that would address the zoning issues with respect to anything that the town has?
They, they would address potential changes in the way land is used. Okay, if it's a zoning issue and somebody makes a ruling, and there's a disagreement, they would come to us for a resolution.
I see.
We would make a ruling, you know, on that and say, "Here's, here is the considered opinion of the zoning board. It was voted, say, you know, five to two in favor of it." Then that would be our interpretation. Now, I mean, that can be appealed if, you know, if the town came in and said, "We want, we want to put up, you know, a windmill over here," and we say, you know, "It's not permitted on the hamlet zone." Well, we're going to do it anyway. I said, "Well, you know, so our interpretation is that, no, it's not allowed."
So would the, the planning board then go to the codes officer and express his, his request that the town has maybe asked for something and done in this particular property? And then the zone officer would say yea or nay, and then come to you?
The planning, the planning board, the way it is constituted in the town of Western, they're an advisory board. They don't have any authority over anything. They, they used, they used to be the one, well, I take it back. They are the ones that review and approve subdivision plans. That's it. And that's, that's actually designated by state law. That they have to do. Beyond that, they don't have any authority. The only one, they used to have authority for, say, a conditional use permit or whatever, we took that away from it. All sits with the zoning board. So unless, unless it's something that the state mandates that they must do, like a subdivision review, they don't have any authority. They're strictly an advisory board. So the planning board can sit down and say, "Okay, here's our opinion. We're going to write a letter of recommendation to the town board and say, 'Here's what we think you ought to do.'" But it's up to the town board, which is the legislative authority in the town of Western. It's up to them to make that decision.
So then they would go to the planning board. The planning board would, or, yeah, they would go to the planning board. The planning board would say something like, "Hey, town, we need to pass a motion. We need a motion to change the law so that we can build this building, or we can put this parking lot in, or we can change it substantively, substantively so that, you know, it fits into whatever and, you know, it has minimal impact to anybody who lives in that area."
Yeah, they can, they can make a recommendation, says, "If you want to do this, here's what we, here's what we think you ought to do." So maybe you have to amend the zoning law to include an additional use within the hamlet zone, or...
So that, that's my point, I believe, is that in the end, if the town wants to do something here, they can change the law in any way that they need to to make that happen, regardless as to those folks that may live on that street that may be negatively impacted by that.
Yes.
That's interesting.
The ultimate authority sits with the town board. If they decide they want to change the zoning ordinance, you know, the ZBA may say, "We don't think it's a good idea. The planning board may recommend against it." But it's ultimately up to them. If they decide to change it, they have a public hearing, and they vote the law into place. It's done. The only thing, the only, the only recourse anybody has after they pass that law, you, I think you get, I would have to know, which I, I think for something like that, you would have something like sixty days to file an Article 78.
Sure.
Over the state Supreme Court, said, "We think they screwed up."
Well, there is no other thing. The town can change it again. The town has the ultimate. Yeah, so those two things, Article 78, the town can figure it.
Yep.
Well, that's the point of the public hearing.
Yeah, but, yeah. But keep in mind, you know, a public hearing, the public gets to express an opinion.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the opinion carries about as much weight as the air you breathe.
Understood.
I mean, it's supposed to be taken into account, and if you've got, you know, comments, you know, from the public, and somebody said, "You don't even take the public comment into account." And somebody says, "I'm going to, I'm going to file an Article 78, Supreme Court," and said, "Hey, everybody made all these comments. They ignored them." You know, and the court can take that into account and say, "You know, we, we kind of agree with you guys, toss a law," or they can say, "No, that's the town board prerogative."
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so we, we try to stay out of that sort of thing.
For obvious reasons.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you an example of how the planning board would work, and this is under the current ordinance. There's a couple of provisions in there of what they call planned development districts. And under the current ordinance, there's three types. Under the new one, there's only going to be one. But there's a planned development commercial, planned development industrial, planned development residential. If somebody wants to come in, in a particular zone, let's say in a residential seasonal zone where I live, and they want to put in a small housing development, well, that's not permitted up there. They can apply to the town board. They send a letter to, and here's how it works. They send a letter to the town board, said, "We would like you to consider letting us put in this housing development. Here's some generalized plans. It doesn't have to be specific. Here's a generalized plan of what we want to do and how it would work. We want you to establish, in this plot that we've got here, a planned development residential district." The town board hands that over to the planning board. The planning board looks at it, reviews it, decides whether or not it's an appropriate use of the land. They send a recommendation back to the town board. The town board can then vote to actually establish that little tiny district in that spot. That's basically what you saw up the fire station. They set up, they put an amendment in that says, "We now have an overlay, which kind of floats wherever you need it, that you can apply to a particular district to allow these particular things." So they said, "Oh, we're going to lay it down over there." Or, you know, they passed it to allow it, and then they said, "We want it to be over there." And then, you know, once that's done...
And that is, that is the cousin of spot zoning.
It's, yes, it is. It is very much so. But it's the legal way to do it. You know, you can, you can agree with it, disagree with it, you know. You know, like, in, in the town here, pretty much any place you build a house, you got to have a builder's anchor, two hundred by two hundred. But if somebody wanted to put in a planned development residential district, and said, "We want to cluster the houses," that would be something the planning board would look at and say, "Okay, is there enough vacant land around it so that there's still space? Are they going to be able to handle things like water and septic systems and stuff if we allow them to do this? Have they proposed to put in, you know, say, dedicated park area, which is one of the standards in there?" And if the planning board said, "Yeah, it looks like that's the case," then they can recommend to the, you know, to the town that they establish this district. But, you know, again, these, the kind of things, you know, they're, you know, they can be, they're not supposed to be arbitrary. They're supposed to be good rationale behind the decisions. But everybody making the decisions is human. Some people have, you know, have, they need one where the other, and other people will go the other end. And that's why we have politics. But yeah, I mean, those, those kinds of procedures are specified. You have to follow those pretty much to the letter, or you can, you can get yourself, get your, get your wrist left. Anybody else? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Thanks, I don't know.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, we hate to... Yes.